All right, good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, Board Work Session. It's Monday, December ninth, 2024. It's 10:05 a.m. My name is Ty Mancer, Chair of the Board. To my left, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Forney, Commissioner Caroline Mahia, Commissioner Emily Klaus, and Commissioner Edwards is excused this morning. County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder here. We have virtual public attendance on the Thurston County YouTube channel. Two hours to cover three agenda topics. And first up is Black Home Initiative.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have staff from Public Health and Social Services here. I'd like to invite you to come join the table. And I'll hand over to Rob Gelder, Assistant County Manager, to set the table for the conversation.
Thank you, County Manager. Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Gelder, Assistant County Manager. And this is an item coming for the Board today that first went through the Regional Housing Council. And so this is an opportunity for the entire Board to hear about the Black Home Initiative. So joining us today, not only do we have Tom Webster, but we also have Krista Lenson from the City of Olympia, who's joining us and being able to provide the briefing this morning. And of course, our Director of Public Health and Social Services, Jen Frey. Turn it over to you.
Thanks, Rob. So again, Tom Webster with Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. And I appreciate Krista joining us this morning. Krista's really taken the lead for our region on the Black Home Initiative. So she's been a valuable resource and I really appreciate her coming today to help answer questions that I may not know. So really, kind of as Rob stated, this was a presentation that was given to the Regional Housing Council in September, and there was interest in sharing with you as we move forward. So the Black Home Initiative, so what we're going to do is just a little bit of background and some information about what BHI is, and then talk about what the opportunity is for the county to possibly engage in this initiative. So just to set the context of kind of what we're trying to address is, due to a longstanding history of structural racism and anti-black discrimination, black households are less likely to own their homes, providing fewer opportunities to build wealth and benefit from intergenerational wealth building. So according to data provided by the Black Home Initiative, approximately forty-two percent of black households in Washington State have zero net worth, and that's compared to fourteen percent of white households. Black households in Thurston County have the lowest rate of homeownership of any racial or ethnic group. And according to data from the Thurston County Assessment of Fair Housing, the homeownership rate in Thurston County for white, non-Hispanic households is sixty-nine percent, while the homeownership rate for black households is forty-five percent. So this initiative is really looking to close that gap. So Black Home Initiative began in 2021 with that goal of focused on addressing disparities in homeownership and the racial wealth gap for black households. So BHI started in 2021 with a geographic focus of South King County, South Seattle, and North Pierce Counties. And they set a goal to support fifteen hundred new black low-to-moderate income homeowners by the end of 2027. There are over a hundred entities who have signed the BHI Partner Pledge, who participate in the network. And there's many different sectors involved: construction, financing, government, and many others, homebuyer outreach. And so it's really an impact model network, an impact network model. There's no one organization that's leading the effort, but they really kind of refer to themselves as a constellation of entities working on this shared priority.
I like that term. Yeah, it's pretty cool.
So in its short lifespan, BHI has helped develop and pass statewide legislation to create the Covenant Homeownership Program, which launched in July, which provides down payment and closing cost assistance to BIPOC first-time homebuyers. And they've created a seven-point plan to guide their areas, to guide their efforts in several areas, to increase the affordable housing supply, policy development and advocacy, conducting outreach to potential homebuyers, providing support to prepare them to purchase a home, creating programs and access to financing, and making sure current black homeowners stay in their homes they already own, increasing collaboration between groups working in various sectors. Locally, in the fall of 2023, at a statewide conference, several organizations in Thurston County heard about the initiative and kind of reached out to learn more. And since really April of this year, we've been having meetings with interested local organizations, as well as representatives from BHI, to learn more about the initiative and how we could become more involved. So there's been a small but growing group of local stakeholders listed on the slide, so partners like WSECU, Olympia Federal Savings, Thurston County Realtors Association, Habitat for Humanity, the Thurston Housing Land Trust, Northwest Cooperative Development Center, as well as staff from jurisdictions of Lacey, Olympia, Tubwata, Yelm, and the county. So lots of meetings, asking questions, getting answers to those questions. And in September, I believe it was, these organizations sent a letter to the BHI leadership requesting that they expand the initiative into Thurston County. The BHI initiative has responded positively to that. So and right now, they're working on kind of figuring out the logistics. And the hope is that there will be announcements in early 2025, maybe January or February, officially welcoming Thurston County as the region and expanding the partnership or the initiative into Thurston County. But that hasn't been officially announced yet. And then just kind of the next slide, really those similar organizations that have signed on to that pledge already. So in terms of how this works...
Can I ask just for the signed partner pledge? I know that the City of Lacey, as well as the City of Tubwata, are also kind of in the stage where we're at, where they're also receiving presentations and having conversations with their council members on whether they want to also sign on to this. Is that correct?
That's correct. I know the City of Lacey has a presentation. I'm less familiar with Tubwata. Do you know Krista?
Yeah, I think they've had one work session, but I don't think it's like moved forward for a vote for approval yet. In Lacey, their Social Justice and Equity Commission heard a presentation and want to keep exploring it. Thank you.
So we feel, in looking at the Black Home Initiative and how it partners up with kind of existing jurisdictional work plans, we feel there's a lot of overlap with the local housing action plans that especially Lacey, Olympia, and Tubwata have developed around supporting, increasing the supply of affordable housing, funding homeownership activities, supporting cooperative ownership. It's also in alignment with the Assessment of Fair Housing, which the county, the City of Olympia, and the Housing Authority did, which is a requirement of HUD. That was done in 2022, which identifies increasing BIPOC access to homeownership as one of the key goals of that assessment. And also in alignment with kind of recent Regional Housing Council efforts to increase communication with the community and advocate for statewide policies and funding. And we're working on updating the Housing Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan at the county. We think this aligns well. I know that work is still continuing, but aligns well with the Comprehensive Plan updates. In terms of opportunities, so the, kind of broadly speaking, when you kind of join the network, it would allow us an opportunity to connect with partners in King and Pierce County, who've been working on these issues for the past several years. We can work through, there's existing project teams that we can work through and continue to meet with regional partners on a periodic basis. We've been in conversations with BHI, so there'd be kind of both the kind of broad, kind of King County-Pierce kind of working groups that we could be part of, as well as having a Thurston County-specific meeting that would perhaps happen quarterly. There's some facilitation and administrative support possibility from BHI. We have access to organizations that have a statewide network and presence in our community to learn from those regions, as well as share what we're doing here in Thurston County. Organizations who do sign the BHI network, sign a partner pledge, but that does not require a specific time or financial commitment, but rather a commitment to participate in the effort. And that signifies a commitment toward the shared goals and priorities to the extent that each group is able to participate. So partners can get involved in work happening on those project teams. Those teams are working in the areas of buyer outreach, lending and underwriting, repurchase counseling and supports, sustaining existing homeowners, communication and narrative, shifts around faith initiatives, policy mobilization, capital funding, land identification, and strategy development methods and models and construction financing. So those are some of the areas that they're working on. More specifically, I think, for the county, again, by signing the partner pledge, there's no specific commitment of resources or action the county is taking. BHI recognizes that partners may not be able to endorse every policy position that the initiative is exploring or taking. So there's no kind of agreement that you're kind of automatically signing up on to every policy. They want partners to feel comfortable being transparent about what limitations they do have. But then endorsements for major policies happen on a case-by-case basis. So a couple possible ways that Thurston County could contribute to the BHI network include using our social media and other communication outlets to inform the public about the work of the BHI, to support outreach to potential homebuyers, and encourage constituents to take action. Through committing or encouraging staff to participate in BHI project teams and bringing back best practices and lessons learned from other communities, and sharing efforts in Thurston County with other jurisdictions. Through the Regional Housing Council, some of the capital funding awards that the county ultimately makes could be in alignment with BHI objectives. And then also just helping to facilitate connections within the Thurston community among potential stakeholders and partners. So at this point, really wanted to provide a high-level overview. Also in your packet is more information on the partner pledge. And then I think, happy to answer any questions. And I think ultimately, our ask is whether you would like us to bring a motion forward to the Board for consideration to join the network. There's no specific timeframe. This can happen at any point in the future. Again, there is expected to be an announcement in January, early February. So if the county wanted its name associated with that announcement, then that would be the time. But there's no specific deadline on which a decision needs to be made. So with that, happy to answer questions.
First, I just want to say thank you for all the work you've put into this. I remember the first time we had a briefing on this at the Regional Housing Council, and I was really excited. So it's, you know, it's really exciting to me to see it come forward to us and start to kind of come to fruition and to know that other jurisdictions are hearing briefings as well. Personally, I'm really interested in signing on. I've had a lot of time to look through the materials, and I think it's something that would be really beneficial to our community. I do have two questions. You might have said this, but how many households have they helped? I know it says by 2027, the goal is fifteen hundred. Do you know where they're at with that?
I don't. Do you know, Krista?
I don't know. I only know I heard a recent report on the new Covenant Homeownership Program, which started in July, and they've helped over eighty households since July purchase homes through that program. But I'm not sure about the initiative as a whole.
I'll say the other thing, one of the things they're thinking about is whether would they expand into Thurston County, whether they want to increase that number or not, and whether... So that's one of the things they're deciding. I don't think we've heard on that yet, in terms of how they would, by expanding their reach, whether they would increase that number.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is, what exactly does this look like for staff? Have you all had time to kind of think that through? I know at first, when we heard this at Regional Housing Council, similarly, you've said it here, it's kind of participating to the extent possible for each partner. What does that look like for our staff?
I think primarily, at this point, it involves attending meetings, especially identifying some of the kind of project teams and participating in those meetings. So we're doing, we've been attending some meetings kind of regionally, as we're kind of exploring this option. And so moving forward, I think it would be identifying one, two, probably no more than three of those project teams to engage with. So I don't believe it would be a substantial burden on existing staff resources. Staff are interested in joining this. So I think the staff commitment is fairly modest at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate you mentioning that you're aligning this work as well with the Comprehensive Plan. I think that's really important, especially as we're looking for planning in the future. And so I think that's really important. So thank you for doing that. I'm interested to sign on to this as well. I think it aligns very well with the Board's racial equity work, especially the resolution that we've passed. And it aligns with our housing goals as well. So I think it kind of ticks off two boxes that the Board is definitely interested in. I'm excited to hear in January what we hear back from them. I also would love for the Racial Equity Council to hear this presentation and kind of start involving them into this process, especially as, you know, they're recommending policies. So they can kind of just see this as well. And I was gonna say something else and I kind of lost my train of thought. But yeah, involving our Racial Equity Council or having the presentation laid out for them, I think would be something that would benefit us. And maybe they have suggestions that we hadn't thought about, or they might be interested in kind of helping pick up some of that work as well.
Commissioner, we are happy to do this and work with the two co-chairs on scheduling Jen's team to come out and present. Anything else from the Board?
No, I mean, this is the first time I've seen it, so I'm trying to... They have a seven-part policy kind of statement. And so I would encourage everybody to kind of look through the different policies that we would be aligning our policy goals, that we'd be aligning ourselves with. There's nothing, I don't see anything that's scary. There's, you know, just increasing density issues and lowering kind of design reviews and permit thresholds. There's a lot of specific policy language that the BHI website outlines. The, you know, I'm, it talks about, you know, historic issues of redlining in King County and Pierce County being issues for some of the problems outlined. But I'd be curious, like, what specific, you know, issues are causing the problem in Thurston County? I've never, like, heard or seen an argument for, like, you know, redlining having been an issue here. I don't know.
It actually was. Yeah. And when I first came on the Board, it was one of the issues that, and kind of one of the main things that helped us push the resolution through, declaring racial equity a crisis. And so the auditor had to send out, there were several covenants that still had very distinct language on redlining. And basically, the auditor sent out letters to all of those homeowners, letting them know that, you know, they could update that language. And it was an effort that the Board pushed through with the auditor to help. And that was back in 2021. So it's recent till now. And I think that it was the same year we had a presentation. I don't remember who it was from. Commissioner Mancer, I'm not sure if you remember, where it was talked about, and Thurston County was one of the examples that they laid out on having that redlining, as well as other counties. I believe it was Pierce County as well, as Pierce and Thurston County, they used as an example. And I believe it was a chamber event, if I'm...
They brought in, like, the person from Treasury from San Francisco, and they've done a study and mock. About, yeah.
And how that's kind of affected our residents here as well. So it was very interesting. So it definitely has affected.
Thank you. And there's, yeah, so I guess, well, in the handout we got, there's the four partner principles, which are good. I haven't seen what Commissioner Forney was talking about, but...
They've got a good website. It's got all kinds of stuff to explore.
I guess I'm wondering, is there, well, I can explore that. I mean, I'm thumbs up on this for sure. But in terms of, like, is it going to bridge over to actual, I mean, he mentions, you just threw out the word permitting and a couple other words that sound more like board code, policy, you know, more substantive actions. And is that kind of where this is going at some point, is that we would make, you know, policy changes that would help facilitate the goals?
Potentially. I think, under the policy group, and I'd like to, Krista, if you know more, that I think there could be recommendations coming out of the BHI.
These project, you call them teams?
Project teams that are looking at that policy recommendations. And again, that would be something that potentially could be brought either at a state level. I think they're primarily focused on a state level, but there's ones that could also be brought at a county level, I think. Probably areas for us to explore in more detail, but I'll, Krista, if you have anything else.
Yeah, they have. Also, there's a kind of a sample document they have. That's just a brief guidance document for policymakers. And it's considerations like, you know, impact fees or things like that, you know, basically ways to increase more affordable housing supply and to make it easier to build affordable housing. So there is some existing guidance, but like Tom said, there's a policy group too that helps on some of these issues as well, both statewide and local.
I think this was really meant to be sort of that initial foray into the conversation. So I think we can find additional materials, whether it's sort of suggested guidance, detailed pledge language, et cetera, so that we can circle back to the Board and make sure that whenever we move forward in terms of signing on.
Okay, so the direction is to just keep moving something forward for Board consideration?
If the Board concurs, we can, it looks like there's concurrence.
Yes, from me.
For heads nodding or thumbs up. Exploring more, I think, is, yeah.
Pull more detailed information together and provide the Board with something to, and some attachments on that. So you gave us several weeks. We'll put it together. Appreciate Tom, and thank you for coming out. A special guest. Appreciate you being here from the City of Olympia. We'll continue to provide the context. I'm sure you have all the information.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next up, Board of Health Composition, informational.
Or I might, if I may.
Who's taking the lead?
I'll jump in first, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
So Rob Gelder, Assistant County Manager. Thank you for time on the Board's schedule. We've got one very cute PowerPoint slide for the Board, just with a proposal in terms of a timeline for this. As the Board will recall, at the October, yeah, it's already, it's amazing how time flies, the October Board of Health meeting, there was a good discussion about making potential recommendations for the Board of County Commissioners for adjusting the composition of the Board of Health. And so we're coming to the Board today with basically a draft ordinance and a proposed timeline that reflects a process for implementing that code change and thus the composition amendment to the Board of Health. And just to recap for those who are watching today, there was a recommendation, so just a little bit of history, but not too much, right? The state law changed. Originally, several years ago, the Board of Health was the three county commissioners. Then state law changed that caused the expansion of that. At that point in time, the Thurston County Board of Health moved from three to eight individuals. And then there was the addition of some more commissioners, which meant that we expanded from eight to twelve. And that was because the Understate RCW requires a balancing of the elected officials with the community members that are on the Board. The recommendation from the Board of Health to the Board of County Commissioners is to move from twelve to ten. And the process there of changing, in short, from five county commissioners to three county commissioners with two other elected positions, one being a rotational seat of the North City, which we already have in place on code. Currently, it's Lacey. It'll be moving to Olympia and go through a rotation. The second one was actually carving out a seat for South County elected officials. So, but the nuance that you'll see in the draft code is to not have the same rotation, kind of that obligation from one city to the next, but allowing the South County cities to identify their representative, because it may be easier for them to be able to have someone make that commitment if we aren't so prescriptive in how that unfolds. So the timeline that we had basically outlined was to brief you now, get sort of board... So the the timeline that we had basically outlined was to brief you now, get sort of board concurrence as to the direction. And then we can, because this is in code, we will have to go through the process of actually identifying a hearing date, publishing that notice, et cetera, and following all of those steps prior to implementation. And so a little bit more of a protracted timeline will give us the opportunity to have those conversations with folks in the South and hopefully be able to identify someone who's willing to step up. And then ultimately implement this no later than September is what's on the slide. However, Dr. Jen has been having conversations with our community members, just touching base with them, and I don't know if you'd like to to share anything more on that.
Sure, so I talked to each of the community members who all except one are very eager to stay on the Board of Health and renew their terms, especially the three that are coming up in, two of the three that are coming up in September. So one of the terms that is set to expire in September, she has taken on some other national rules and she, for the good of the Board of Health, if necessary, is willing to step down sooner, as soon as the Board of Health is ready, so that way the two commissioners as well could also step off at that time. So there is an earlier off-ramp if we need to from this timeline that is on the PowerPoint. And she has said she'd still like to be involved in subcommittee work and continue that work as well, too.
Which is probably a really great.
Right.
Part of it is to still have involvement, even though she wouldn't be on the board.
Not saying the name.
I don't think it's a.
Yeah, it's not a secret, Lynn Nelson.
So I, I think it's, it's one of those things that, because we do have those three positions up, one of them being a sort of a new appointee filling in unexpired term. We just wanted to make sure that we had a sense of where everyone was at.
Does that give us, does that line up with our three buckets?
Yep.
We had that flexibility either way, but just to double check. Yes, I'd be us with each current area.
I would still leave, Lynn was serving in bucket number three and we do have Heidi Kanadal right now as bucket number three. So still leaves one person.
That bucket is.
So bucket number one was a medical professional, in short. Bucket number two was a lived experience or equity.
Or user, right?
Yes, yes. And then bucket number three was community partner, in short, summing that up in a row.
Yeah. And they're both kind of right. The the middle one was, yeah, it was, it was a vulnerable community member, but didn't have to be. It could also be somebody that was a consumer of public health and had like experiences that consisted of that. It's more like a lived experience person, however that looked.
And page two and three actually outline in your draft ordinance. And that is, none of that is changing. That is part of the local code that gives you a sense of what the quote unquote buckets are.
Yeah, that's a good way.
And we had a few members who, even though we have them in the one bucket, they could cross to another and we were prepared for that. But in this scenario, we won't need that. Everybody can remain right where they are.
So our recommendation was to not necessarily force attrition to be able to achieve sort of the the change. But with Lynn's flexibility to serve until such time that we affect the change, it gives us a little bit more flexibility. So given just the amount of time that takes for notice, getting scheduling a hearing and implementing that, probably within the first quarter, first third of the year, we would be able to do this. But at the same time, would definitely want to make sure we have those South County conversations. So when we make the change, we can still be a whole complement on the board.
I just want to say thank you both Rob and Jen for this. I think this timeline gives the board, the community, the Board of Health, some adequate time, really, instead of trying to just smash it all in like really quickly and try to get this through. I think I appreciate this just long-term timeline. So it helps all of us better prepare.
Thank you. And it also gives the the board some additional time and opportunity to discuss of the three commissioners who would like to to continue to serve on the Board of Health as well.
Yeah, because I did not address that in my proposed committee. I just doesn't, didn't see if it was going to come fast enough to, you know. But maybe we can start thinking about that. So it would still not go until September or something?
No, no, it actually would have the opportunity to go more quickly.
I'm for going more quickly, frankly.
I think Lynn would probably prefer that too, just because she said she she has a lot of other national commitments now that are taking.
I think it's very doable for first quarter. To make that happen.
Are we having those conversations this afternoon?
Uh.
The Board of Commissioners, no, not till next month.
Next month.
Yes, so think about it. Maybe we can just touch on that. I've heard a little bit from a few of you, just anecdotally, but you know, be good to know in advance if there's two commissioners that would rather be removed from Board Health or two or three commissioners that want it really, you know, really.
Or stay on subcommittee.
Want to stay on, yeah, or stay on subcommittees, yeah, all that.
Or plug for the subcommittees, yes.
Yeah, well, there you go. That's a good way of balancing all that. All right, so is this just for us to be aware of and?
It's a check in.
Questions for?
It's a check in on timing. I think what you're signaling for us, the board is going to continue to move this forward so we can get it lined up.
Yeah. Any objection to that? Okay, thank you.
I think the same presentation tomorrow night at Board of Health, so that the rest of the members are aware too.
And so we, if there are no additional, I would welcome any suggested edits to the draft ordinance. If you have an opportunity, otherwise we will work with clerk of the board to get an AIS in to set up here.
Good job, Rob and Jen.
Thank you.
Public health Monday.
All right, any commissioner items? I know we have Commissioner check in. It's time this afternoon, Commissioner Claus.
I have a question just in relation to the announcement the board made last week. I saw the plan is to reinstate me on my external boards and committees. There is a Jazzcom meeting tonight, so I'm not sure when I'll be reappointed officially. But I plan on attending that meeting as I have the last several months. I just wasn't sure if I'll officially be representing the county tonight or if that's going to have to come at a regular meeting and with a motion and all of that.
The word, I can't really even remember how exactly the wording landed on that. Is there a motion we have to make or is there a timing that was contemplated?
Commissioners, as part of this statement that you implemented, there was also an attached resolution that I think it's in the resolution, but we could either take it and that's, and we're trying to get that before you on Wednesday. So we could either take it as part of the resolution or have it separate discussion and a decision made. It's really up to your call.
I'd see it as cleanest as wrapped up in a resolution and it's official. Is that something we're talking about this afternoon?
No.
Okay.
This afternoon, it's not on.
Okay, I thought, well, I, again, a lot was happening at the last minute on Friday and I was in the middle of a conference in a room, I could barely hear the phone. But what I thought I understood was that the resolution, the statement was out and I saw that on the website and the resolution was going to be further discussed with with council before action, which I assumed would be early this week.
Yes, so the clerk is reformatting it and we'll be talking with council once we have their perspective. We'll circle up with the board.
So that could be.
Tomorrow or Wednesday, yeah.
So it sounds like within a couple of days, Commissioner Claus. And and again, I would say if if for some reason the resolution is not issued, for whatever reason, then we would take up potentially a separate motion to a coherent statement, I would assume. I'm looking at magazines, but.
You have that option.
Because we need to hear the input from council about the resolution and how it should be structured or whatever. I don't know what they're going to say. Okay, so that answers that. Any other questions from, any other commissioner items this morning? Okay, then we're adjourned back at two.
Yes.